Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just put it live, so.
It's live now? Okay, well, I'm. Yeah, we're not talking about football anymore. How's your wife doing? Are you gonna get surgery and all of that? Thinking that? Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that.
There it is.
Okay.
Ready, Jeff? Got enough reading done?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've read out.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for April 28th. Ask for an approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Moving on to approval of minutes from the March 24th, 2022 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Approve, is there a second?
Second.
Question, any? Changes or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Moving on to public hearing. In this being a public hearing, we will conduct it in phases. Have the staff give us explanation of what its pains, and then we will. Public comments for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the change. Finished, we will then close that portion of the public hearing and open a portion for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. And then, when that, when those are finished speaking, then we will close that portion of the public hearing and begin. Any commission deliberations? Okay, so at this point, it's a consideration of a petition from applicant Teresa Shell for the rezoning of a two-acre tract at property address 458 Sonoya Road from R12 to C1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening is a petition from applicant and owner of the property at 458 Sonoya Road, parcel 0736, 021. From, the application is from R12, which is residential, 1,200 square foot minimum home size, to C1, which is downtown commercial, otherwise light commercial as compared with C2, which is highway commercial. I'll go ahead and do, we'll have a little bit more in-depth summary and history of this item, since this is the second time before this, this body, and will be the second time before council on the 19th. Sorry, I believe it's the 12th, I may have had that. But council, at the following council meeting. The current configuration, the stated intent of this rezoning is to accommodate a Montessori school slash daycare on the property. The current configuration of structures on the property would accommodate C1 development regulations and setback requirements without creating non-conformities. The barn on the north end of the property and the house both lie outside of the setback and buffer requirements for adjoining residential for C1. Michelle applied for the same request in August of '21. Planning Commission recommended approval of the request with the condition that a traffic study be performed. That approval was three to two with Mr. Duncan and Mr. Shaw in opposition. The town council subsequently denied the petition. Prior to January of, prior to January of 2022, the character area for this property and others west of Sonoya Road was for production and employment, consistent with some development on that side of the road. It was council's determination that this future land use character area was not appropriate for the undeveloped or currently residential properties that existed west of Sonoya Road. And did amend the comprehensive plan and future land use map in accordance with OCGA, which is the Official Code of Georgia Standards, in a public hearing in January of this year. Staff's determination of this property, the property currently lies as a border property in the future land use map, our current future land use map, between the production and employment and estate residential character areas. And I'll go ahead and pull up that, go ahead and pull up that new future development map. Here. Property in question exists right here. So you can see we have estate residential, and that this is what that property, what 458 Sonoya Road is currently. And then, just south of it is production and employment. This property here, just south is zone C2, which is highway commercial. Situated within the estate residential character area, the property would ideally assume residential zoning. If, taking a look at the comp plan and future development map, in kind of isolation. The future development map, however, is a guiding document, it's not prescriptive like a zoning ordinance, with property situated on the edges potentially assuming a different zoning based on unique circumstances. Given that 458 Sonoya Road borders an already zoned C2 property, as well as an active rail line and industrial kind of continuing off to the west, C1 or office institutional, so light, commercial zoning districts could be appropriate classifications. Even educational institutional could be appropriate classifications, since they would be considered a transitional or step-down zoning district in terms of intensity. So if we're talking about light, industrial, and highway commercial being our highest intensity zoning districts, which they are, they exist to the south, you know, a step-down transition would be something that's in-between the intensity of that and estate residential, which is our lowest kind of intensity zoning classification. So something like office could be, could be appropriate there. Commercial zoning would also remove a zoning buffer incurred on the C2 property to the south. That's because the property is currently residential, that C2 property incurs a 75-foot buffer, which would make currently that property to the south, the C2 property, unpractical to build on. Staff determinate, determines either residential or light commercial such as office institutional as appropriate for this particular property. Heavy commercial or industrial zoning like C2 would not be consistent for this property. Staff would not, does not recommend a heavy commercial zoning for this particular property. So, light commercial or residential would be appropriate. The existing land use is vacant, surrounding zoning to the north is agricultural, to the south is highway commercial, to the east is R12, and then to the west is agricultural and heavy industrial. I'll go ahead and read the zoning ordinance compatibility and impact statement that's listed in our ordinance. Would zoning permit suitable uses with surrounding properties? C1 zoning is not explicitly permitted within the estate residential character area. However, C1 zoning is compatible with commercial properties to the south purely from a zoning perspective. Land to the north, although zoned residential, is likely too narrow for construction of a building. Commercial to residential buffers are also going to be applied to, or would be applied to, 458 Sonoya Road to the north and east of the property. Those buffers exist for the purpose of protecting residential properties within certain proximity from the intensity of a higher intensity use. So, the second question is, will zoning adversely affect adjacent properties? Commercial properties to the south, being commercial, will not be adversely affected from C1 or office zoning or its current residential zoning. The C2 property to the south would actually recapture currently unbuiltable area with removal of that buffer requirement that I mentioned previously. The property will be subject to residential buffers to the north and east for adjacent owner protection and be required to submit traffic impact analysis with a site plan if used for any commercial purpose. Especially if that commercial purpose requires any site improvement. And so, that site plan would come before you, the intensity of that development would necessitate most likely a traffic study to show how the operation of the site would work, and that would be brought before you in the form of a site plan application. Does the property have reasonable economic use as currently zoned? It is staff's determination that the property does have reasonable economic use, given its future land use character area designation, unless evidence to the contrary in the form of sole occupancy records is reported to the town due to site or other conditions. Would the proposed zoning result in a use which will or could be excessively burdensome on existing infrastructure? It's staff's determination that this zoning would not result necessarily in an excessive burden or existed, on existing infrastructure. Higher intensity commercial and industrial land uses exist along Sonoya Road in this area of town. A lower intensity commercial zoning would likely not overburden Sonoya Road, particularly if it's lower intensity than light industrial, which exists along Sonoya Road. A lower intensity or specific site considerations on traffic movement will have to be identified during any site planning portion of further development for this property. Schools, daycares, and the like in terms of particular use must provide circular drives for pickup and drop-off, and they need to, of course, provide for adequate vehicular stacking. Given the pre-existing incurred cuts, that should be able to be accommodated, although the scale and intensity of that, that use will need to come with a traffic study to determine that. If a traffic study yields data suggesting an unacceptable impact on roads, the site plan will need to be adjusted until such impact is proven to be mitigated or resolved. And that is the end of my staff report, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I will open up a public hearing for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this change, please come forward.
Do I need to sign this sheet?
You can sign it later.
Okay. I'm happy to sign it.
I, I have your information in the packet and everything, too.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Newton Galloway, I'm an attorney with Galloway and Lyndle. Our office is at 406 North Hill Street in Griffin. I do a lot of zoning and development work, both for property owners and also local governments. And I'm here on behalf of Michelle, who's in attendance this evening, along with my, our firm's paralegal, Mr. Lozano. As Mr. Trokey said, you have seen this application before. And it seek, it was the, the application was RZ 2021-14, and it was denied, as he correctly noted by the mayor and council, in August. The property is two, two acres roughly. Address 458 Sonoya Road with an existing barn, an existing house, standard mid-century ranch-style house. And both of them have been empty for a while and are deteriorating. Michelle acquired the property after investigating the comp plan and with due diligence, applied with the city to investigate the propriety of the use of the location, and then she proceeded to acquire it seeking to renovate the property for a Montessori daycare facility. Now, since that time, as Mr. Trokey said, the only change that has occurred is a modification in your comp plan. And that goes from production, I'm sorry, I've lost, lost my word. It's production employment to estate residential, sorry. Now. This is the second time Mr. Trokey has had to prepare a staff recommendation on this application. I have reviewed both, and I want to tell you that I believe his applica, his analysis is thorough, and he has identified the key components to the zoning issues on this property. Never have to have a lawyer if you don't have a problem piece of property. And this is a problem piece of property because of two words that were referenced by him. The first is transitional. The other is vacant. And his analysis identifies the factors that make this a problem piece of property. Mr. Trokey, could you pull your, the Q public map back up, please, sir? And I'm assuming your screens give you what's behind. The property's location is problematic. It is surrounded by what is the second heaviest travel road in Tyrone. I used to live in Peachtree City, and I remember when there was no 4 Lane 74, and that was the main thoroughfare. And it's surrounded on the west and the south by already existing heavy commercial or industrial properties. It is at the border of those. And then across the street, you have different styles of residential dwellings. And as a result, the property is impacted by the shape, its shape, zoning of the adjoining tracks, and the fact that if it's zoned R12, and you're looking at a permitted use right to just come and apply for a permit for a 1,200 square foot house, then it is inconsistent with the estate residential, future land use map clarifika, classification. Y'all call them neighborhood characters, but it's, it's the same thing as future land use map. Now. This provides you with some choices. And his analysis is further accurate because in addition to his recommendation back in the summer, he has now given another option, which is just as viable. Both, both options, zoning it to C1 with restrictions to limit it to a school or daycare facility, or OI as an alternative to that, both of those are acceptable zoning districts. They allow for this as a conditional use, and the property is already developed to the point that the renovation of the structures that are there comply with the setback in the design requirements for those two districts. So, either of these is acceptable. Now, reading through the, the minutes and some of the historical documents y'all have with regard to zoning, I note that the city does not particularly favor conditional rezoning. But within either of those districts, the imposition of a further condition to restrict the use of the property to just be a daycare, a Montessori school daycare would mean that it is a Montessori school daycare unless somebody comes back up and asks you to change that condition. And we would also be willing to agree to conditions that would restrict that use to what Michelle wants to do. So, basically what we've got, and I will close with this. You have a house and, you have a lot that is odd-shaped and in a difficult location for redevelopment. The house and barn are empty. It was rented, as best we can tell, for about two years, and then has been empty since, at least we believe, the past four to five years. Without something being done, you're faced with a property that will continue to deteriorate, and that deterioration will not impact the commercial properties or the industrial properties, but that deterioration does run the risk of serving as a blight on the properties that are across the street. And it's going to be very hard to find a use that restores this property just as the opponents of the rezoning last summer would desire. It's not, it's not going to be, the likelihood is, it is not going to be redone as an estate home with a railroad track and industrial uses to the south and to the west. So our challenge, and, and I don't think you want somebody to build a 1,200 square foot house on that property. Or, and I believe, if Mr. Trokey can correct me if I'm wrong, that property could be subdivided under C2 and have multiple 1,200 square foot houses on it.
R12, potentially, potentially.
So, we have to work cooperatively to find a reasonable use for this property. Now, the one place where I'll take a little issue with Mr. Trokey is under estate, under the estate neighborhood class, I disagree that there's a reasonable economic use for that property, but we can address that later. So, with, with following the policies that he's identified, following the findings that he's made, which we agree with, we would hope you would see, as well as the neighbors would see, that the presence of a Montessori school is a reasonable renovation and reuse, repurposing of a lot that is supposed to be, or should be, given what you've got out there now, a transitional piece of property. So, to conclude, I would ask that y'all follow Mr. Trokey's recommendations and staff report. Again, we can live with ea, a recommendation of either C1 with a condition to limit it to a Montessori school or OI with the same condition. Either of those are viable options for the property. The neighbors are concerned about commercial being across the street, the OI is an amelioration of that risk. But we would ask that you follow his recommendation, accept his recommendation, and recommend to your mayor and council that this move to either C1 or OI. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this change? I know we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Now open the portion of the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this change, please come forward. Fill out the form afterwards and just leave it with this.
My name's Gary Farr, I live at 475 Sonoya Road, just pretty much across the street. Couple of things I have problems with is, I'll talk about transitional. So, basically, let's say this transitions to commercial. That means whoever owns the property next to it down the road can say, let's transition to commercial. And so forth, where's it going to end? That's the, the house was bought as a residential house. I have no idea what they plan on doing with it, or what their plans were in beginning. But it was sold as a residential location. So, why would you buy a residential location when you want to open up a commercial business? I would think, if you're going to buy that, you would go to the person who you bought it from, hey, you get this changed to commercial, I'm all in for buying it. But that, it happened backwards. All of us, we, you know, they're talking about being a detriment to all of us if it just wears down. Well, it's worn down. The day after the city, after the town council said no, absolutely nothing has been done to upkeep that location. Grass is about that high, the dumpster's still sitting out front. Nothing, I think the toilet got removed, but that was about it. So, as far as it deteriorating, that's on them for allowing it to, to continue to deteriorate. We look at it and see it as eyesore, yeah. But here's the thing about the people who live around there. Even if it rots to the ground and everything caves in, we don't really care, that it, that was family land. And if you kind of see the big square right there on the screen, all of that is one big family. We're not going anywhere, and we would hate to see it deteriorate and everything, but it's not going to really affect our property values because we're still living there. It could have easily been fixed as a house. It was rented as a house. It was used as a house. Even after my aunt and uncle died, it was still utilized as a residence, people lived there. So, I mean, the point that I, I don't get is it was purchased as residential in hopes that it would become commercial. If it, like I said, if it becomes commercial, what's to stop the next? That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Excuse me, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this change? Please come forward.
I'm Jamie Roberts, I own the land that's behind it, I'm pretty much touching it. I maintain all of the land beside it, that's basically the only thing left between me and the industrial park. The industrial park behind the road track is already touching me. So, when you take this property and you change it, that'll kind of, I mean, that'll be all in my backyard, basically, I mean, it's. I don't, I thought we'd already done all this, but I guess we're back here again, this, we, we can do this every six months, I guess. Don't know how to answer, I mean. All right, either way, I, I don't want it to happen, it's a bad place, no matter what. You got all the trucks coming out of Rock Quarry, they climb that hill wide open, and then they're gonna have all the people right there at the daycare, right where the trucks crease the hill out, wide open, loaded. It's just a real bad place, we've owned it for years. We've had several big tractor-trailer wrecks in the front yard, I mean, it's just an unsafe area. The traffic's unreal, it's all you can do to get out of your driveway and just, I, I'm against it all. That's it, thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this change?
I live at 483 Sonoya Road. My concern with it changing is first of all, you want a commercial property by a commercial property. There's land in Tyrone, already zoned commercial, buildings that are available. It should have been purchased like that, not as a residential, and already turning it into commercial before it was even approved. And then, you know, as a mom, I have a lot of concerns with putting that many kids in one environment between a road and a railroad track. Something is going to happen to one of these children. It will. I have two kids that I kept up with, and I was scared to be across the railroad track. You're talking about putting, I think she said 26 kids between a railroad with tractor-trailers and lots of cars and a railroad track. Kids love railroad tracks, they love cars. Which one are they gonna go to? They're gonna go to one or the other, and somebody's gonna get hurt. And my second, my, you know, my other concern is I understand that it's gonna add more cars to Sonoya Road, but you're dropping kids off and picking them up about the same time every day. You're gonna have standing traffic on Sonoya Road, no matter how you look at it. I've dropped my kids off at daycare, I've dropped my kids off at school. Kids don't get out of the car quickly. And if you have a teacher coming out to every car and getting the kids out, as she said she was, it's gonna go even slower. So, again, you got tractor-trailers that are coming, coming up that hill, and you're gonna have cars stopped in the road. That's gonna cause an accident. Already have accident. Already have accidents. I had a car overturned in my front yard. It's already a busy road without adding stop traffic on it and more traffic on it. I, I just don't think it's safe. And, and, but, but mostly, I don't want a residential property to turn commercial or, or anything else, because what's to say it turns commercial and she decides, I don't want to put a Montessori school here? Last time she said she was just going to paint it pink and put purple polka dots on it. So, how, how do we know she's going to take care of it?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this change?
My name is Lloyd Balding. I also live at 483 Sonoya Road. What I'm looking at is you've got a piece of property, the little triangle just to the south of it, that is unusable. And then, you're going to put a commercial property right beside it. When it's unsafe between the railroad and the road, it's going to back up traffic all over the place. Now, once this becomes commercial, who's going to say the next property isn't transitional? Then the next property, and the next property. Once you start changing it from residential to commercial, it doesn't stop. I grew up in Riverdale. It doesn't stop. Before you know it, there'll be a massive land grab right there, and all of our houses are suspect. That's the way it is. Once you make commercial come in, it just keeps spreading. Then all your residents will flee.
Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Close that portion of the public hearing. Now open it up for patient comments, questions.
I'll start. I still have the same problem now that I had in August, and it's the, you were talking about, Philip, traffic study. It'd be nice to see a traffic study done, so we can see what kind of effect that this would have on that road, because I understand what they're saying. Yeah, big time, a lot of traffic, yes, this would slow things up. So, I'm concerned about traffic being backed up on that road, because it's dangerous.
I'll just say, I mean, my, my decision back when we, point Jeff, was to have a traffic study done to look at that area, to have such a school put in that location. I haven't seen it, and I don't know if that study's been done to this point. I'm going to reserve my decision.
Also, I, I would like to see, there had been talk about a traffic study being done when this came before us before. I think if there was any indication of this going forward, we would need that traffic study. Is that part of the idea of this process?
I, I do, I do believe that there were some traffic counts and different things. Teresa, you might be able to speak to that. I don't know if we have a full traffic study, but I do think that maybe, maybe you have some counts and different things like that. I remember that was perhaps part of the previous petition that ended up going to council, where some numbers and different, different things of that regard. Normally, and this was something that we were discussing with legal regarding traffic studies as a condition of like the rezoning. You know, if a traffic study is a result, or is a condition of a rezoning, it's really, is the condition just simply a traffic study, or is the condition that a traffic study be performed that shows that the traffic impact is not harmful? And I think it's really more of the latter. That's usually what comes with a site plan, right? So, during the site planning process, you know, the scale, intensity, circulation of the site and the, and the building is established, numbers are generated as a result of that, and then you can, you can reveal impact. If the impact is too great, the site plan doesn't get approved, or it needs to be amended, or it needs to be scaled in a different manner. So, I just want to kind of make that clear. And Patrick, if, if you're, if you're here with me, if I've said anything that's a little outside of that, you can let me know.
No, I, I think what you said was accurate. I would just say that, you know, if you make a condition that there be a traffic study, all they have to do is conduct a traffic study, and then they've satisfied that condition. And if you make the condition that they conduct a traffic study, and the traffic studies show that the traffic's not going to be a problem, well, then you've got to figure out how that's determined. Who decides if there's not going to be a problem? So, I don't know that making a traffic study a condition is helpful in this instance. If it's part of the site plan process, however, I think that's more appropriate, because then you're actually looking at the use that's going to be put on it, and, and applying that to how the site's going to be planned out.
To be clear, we'd probably do the same thing for residential. So, although residential doesn't come before you as a site plan, any kind of, any kind of residential, like if the, if the lot was split, two homes were built, or what have you, we'd make sure that the, we'd make sure that the, the curb cuts were adequately spaced, that they're not in conflict with each other surrounding properties and things like that. So, there's usually always a traffic component, and it's always a part of that pre-construction kind of submittal process as opposed to zoning. Unless the zoning is tied to what we call planned unit development, where we have a preliminary conceptual, which y'all have seen before as well, like conceptual development plans and things like that, because there's more involved at that point, more is required upfront, but not in this circumstance.
And if I may, real quick, just, I want to, I want to address something else that came up during the public hearing, and that was making a condition on the rezoning that the property be used for a particular purpose. In my mind, the town has never put that sort of condition on a piece of property, at least not since we've been representing. I have questions about whether that would be enforceable. As I've told you all before, a condition of a rezoning should be intended to address a negative of the rezoning. If, if the negative of the rezoning is that it's going to allow all these uses that you don't like, then you should just not rezon it.
I'll, I'll also note that there are in C1, and really in every zoning district, we have conditional uses. Conditional uses are usually applied to the more intense uses within that particular zoning classification. I know for a fact that automotive-related uses are considered higher intensity in C1 and C2. They have conditions that they can't be located within 300 feet of a residential property. So, there are already uses that are not going, just built in to the ordinance itself, built into C1, that would not be permitted to exist on this property. Automotive uses being one of them, but a few other ones, like, like dog kennels and different things like that. They have to be adequately spaced from residential, because they're usually a higher, of a higher intensity, they might have some kind of other nuisance type, you know, activity associated with them. And so, that is the case, already built into C1, that we have conditional uses that would prevent certain uses from going onto this property, given its proximity to. And, and Patrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, their petition is for C1. Office institutional is a use that's directly below C1 in terms of scaled intensity in the ordinance. If they're petitioning for C1, council would, would have reason to be able to grant them office, even though that's not what they're requesting. We've had a similar request where somebody requested C2, and council granted them instead of C2, C1. The applicant, of course, conceded to that request, but that, that is a viable option here, although it's not something that's pursued frequently.
Yes. Our, our position is usually that if, if someone is asking for a particular zoning district, you can, the council, the planning commission can recommend, and the council can approve a rezoning that's less intense than that, than what was requested. I would believe that O and I would be considered a less intense zoning district than C1.
For clarification, because we don't do that often, and it's not usually a recommendation or a staff determination, but...
Thank you for that explanation, because that was one of my questions as well. I don't like the idea of this going to C1. I might be persuaded in OI, but again, I understand the traffic concerns. I don't live on Sonoya Road, but I live off of Dogwood Trail. I know what the traffic is like. I would want some kind of evidence, for lack of a better term, that cars coming in and out of, of this location would be able to get off the road, no matter how many cars are involved, and not sit on Sonoya Road. And I don't know how we can determine that at this point. That was one of my questions on the reason, or question about a traffic study. But if that comes with site plan, then if this were to go forward, that would be a very detailed item to be scrutinized, my point of view.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Michelle's not going to be able to provide that to you tonight. It's potential, since our next meeting for council is in two weeks, that data might be able to be presented to council. Difficult to condition that to go to them, but...
Thank you. The only other question I had at the present time, I know that the backside of this property is up against the railroad, and I guess that would imply or be dealt with at site plan time, too, some kind of barrier between the property and, and the railroad.
I, I believe...
If, again, if this were to go forward.
Believe in the last application, Michelle had perhaps...
The, the, the residents' concern about the creep of, of commercial into residential, who, who owns the property just north of this, this piece? You'd mentioned an impact. This, this piece right here? You're on the other side of the railroad track. So, if, if this were to go O and I, it couldn't, it couldn't be anything less than O and I and the next one.
We, we wouldn't allow anything greater than O and I.
Right.
O and I's the least intense. O and I and E and I, which is their equivalent, educational institutional is E and I. The idea of a transition is that you transition, and then you've transitioned.
As far as you can.
Right. So, like, the idea is you're going, it's already made that transition, and we've got light industrial, highway, commercial. This property would, if we were to assume any other zoning classification other than residential, would be perhaps office or C1. At that point, you've, you've really kind of transitioned, and, and given the, given the future land use character area, really, commercial is really not appropriate beyond that type of...
What's the setback for O and I?
The setback for O and I, against residential, residentially zoned properties, there's still a 75-foot buffer. If it's against a resident, or if it's against a commercial property or another O and I property, it's a side setback of eight feet. Front yard setback, I believe, varies depending on road type, but it's approximately 55 feet, and then the rear yard setback is 30.
The, the property that's just north of this?
Right now, do they have any billable space?
I, I don't want to, I don't want to speak too definitively to that. It would be difficult. I think it's just, it's a narrow lot. With R12 setback requirements off of Sonoya Road, they would likely need a variance to get a... That's true for, since it continues to taper, that's true for all lots going north.
I know, I know where your property is, I understand.
A lot was said. I have, I have several thoughts, I guess. I guess the, the first thought that I have is that, just like last time when it came, I think everybody here unanimously agrees that Sonoya Road has some challenges that we would like to see addressed. I hear that they are doing some intersection studies right now at the intersection that's south, just at the, at the start of the industrial park, right there?
Rockwood, Crab Apple. Yeah, in fact, we've, we've got some results from that traffic study, some preliminary recommendations. Council's not yet approved anything, although most likely a four-way stop and intersection realignment, and a speed limit reduction on Sonoya Road is going to be...
So, so if this intersection is, is improved, and there is a four-way stop there, then traffic will not be moving as quickly probably through there as it once was, because they have to stop. It's a stop sign, right?
Yeah, but I don't know what the, I don't want to, I'm not...
I mean, it didn't happen.
I don't know how far it is from it, but yeah, if you're, the closer you get to that intersection, that would probably be a truism, yeah.
Okay. So, I'm just, so, so traffic is an issue, and, and I know that, that, that is an issue and a factor. I also know that in, in past life of mine, I, I worked with schools, and I understand that, that there are some rules that are applied by the state that kind of determines how they have to, the things that they have to have in place in order for the environment to be safe for children. And there's no way around that. So, I think some of the issues that we talked about as far as children having access to the street or to, or to the railroad, it wouldn't be a factor, because they wouldn't even be allowed to operate without putting some things in place for that. The property to the, the, the lot to the south of that lot, that, that the gentleman said is kind of almost unbuildable, who owns that? Oh, none, none of the residents here own that piece of property? Okay. I'm, I'm wondering if, and I know that the applicant can't just go and just, you know, just purchase something like it's in the grocery store, but can I ask the applicant if they attempted to purchase that lot as well? Okay. Because I'm, I'm just wondering if the combination of, of those two lots together would constitute an endpoint in development, because since the residents own the lots that are north of the applicant's lot, more than likely, those lots will never change their zoning. So, the idea of commercial running amok would literally stop with that lot, because you obviously would not change your zoning to commercial, and it wouldn't be any viability with the size of the lots that you presently have. Since everything across the street is already residential and it's occupied, then commercial creep would not occur on that side of the street as well. I think this is the only property that is, that would be negatively impacted if, if a rezoning were to occur on this lot, and it's, that little lot is kind of sandwiched in between. And so, that would, like, that would be my concern. We have a Montessori school in town, if I'm not mistaken. It's right there behind the Shell Station, isn't that correct? Or is that, yes. When we look, can, can we look at that? Because that's on a, on a street that is just as, you know, a lot of traffic is going through that street as well, and that school has been operating for some time. And I haven't seen any traffic issues, and they have like a similar... And I haven't seen any traffic issues and they have like a similar type of, where people can turn in and turn out. Yeah, that circular driveway. Yes. And I'm just wondering if this would be an adequate way of kind of determining, like if we know how many students that this particular property has versus what she's looking at to see what kind of traffic issues have occurred between the two. This looks a lot bigger than the last one.
First one was 177 feet, this one's 400.
Okay, I don't know how many students, I mean, my kids go crab apple. So I, I don't. Yeah, it's a little, little bigger, just a little bigger. But I'm just wondering if, if we can kind of look at what that traffic impact is coming from such a busy road, turning in, turning out, the time of day that, that drop off and pickup occurs. And if I'm not mistaken, the zoning on that street, we have residential because we just approved a residential subject, you know. Yeah, Mr. Pollard. So, so we've got a, a similar blend of some commercial space with residential as well in this area. Wow, and that's significantly larger.
Not sure what the square footage is.
With the barn and the house.
I don't know what that combined square footage is.
Okay, you don't know? It, it's fine. Okay.
House is 1200.
1265. Okay.
The garage is.
So let, let's just say if the barn was the exact same size as the house, which it looks like the footprint was slightly smaller, that would be a 24, 25, 2600 square foot. Fine.
Any idea what the size of the barn is?
We're measuring it now. That looks about 50, about 30.
I, that, I think I captured an overhang of the barn, but with the overhang, it's 1200. From this little map, this is not to be taken for legal.
I, I, I got you. So, so essentially 1265 and 1265. So that we're talking about, you know, 24, 2500 square feet as opposed to a 5,000 square foot facility at the other monastery school. So I'm assuming that they probably have more children at that school as well, because they have a larger space. I, I'm just curious because I see some similarities there. And I do understand where the citizens are coming from. This is zone residential. Why would you come in and purchase a residential piece of property and want to then rezone it? And I know that that's a question that many people have, but when you, when you go in and you ask for a rezoning, it's for some type of improvement in order for some type of economic gain, for some type of better suitable use for what you would like. And people do that all the time. That's not out of character of, of someone to actually do, especially when the properties are but other similar zoning classifications. So I don't think that it's out of sorts to think that way. I'm just, I'm just concerned that the immediate property underneath it on the south side may be impacted by this decision. By looking at the other factors that exist in the town already. If we, if this were to be zoned or approved, I think that it would not have the, like the, I don't think it would have the traffic issues that we think that it potentially could have, especially with some of the things that we're trying to do in the town anyway. As it currently stands, yes, I think this would be a problem if we didn't improve that intersection, if the speed limit stayed the same, if you had, you know, trucks and cars flying down Sonoya Road. Yeah, that might be a problem, but everybody here, as long as I've been in Tyrone and we've talked about improving this road and this, this street specifically. And I think that under the town's present leadership, they're making moves in order to improve this street and this traffic flow. And I'm appreciative of that. And if we're looking at something as, as, as forward thinking and what works with the future of where we're trying to go, then we shouldn't be trying to do something for necessarily for now, but we should also be thinking about the impact down the road. And I think that if, if we are going to make those changes in the speed limit after doing some of the traffic analysis, I don't see why this is such a bad use because I think last time when the applicant was here, they said they weren't changing the structures. They were going to retrofit, so the inside would change, but the outside shell would not. So when you're driving down this road, it's going to look like residential, even though it functions like commercial. I don't think aesthetically it, it takes anything away from the town. I don't agree with the idea of making this a conditional rezoning for anything. I think that if you change the zoning, whatever the acceptable, acceptable uses in that zoning classification are, that anybody who purchases it in the future can make those choices. So if we, if we make that, we need to be cognizant of the fact that whatever those conditions are, you know, we have to be prepared to live with the impact of that decision as well. So. I've got some, some, some thinking. I got to weigh this a little, a little bit more with a little bit of time.
Come up with a motion at some point. Want more discussion? Is that what you're asking for?
I don't know. So we should also say, because I like to say this every meeting, we're just a recommending body. It's our job to kind of, to kind of vet all of the issues, discuss it and, and talk about it amongst ourselves, come up with the best, best case scenario as we see fit, make our recommendations. Then it goes to council, obviously, for the final decision. They're the decision makers. It's on a future land use map as commercial, but it's not presently commercial.
Actually, I believe it is, isn't it?
It's presently C2 highway commercial.
Oh, well, then I don't have an issue with that. Thank you.
It's not, it's not currently, it's obviously a vacant lot, but the zoning is, is C2 highway.
I got you. Okay.
Okay, I will make this suggestion. If, if the motion is made to go forward and approve, I would request that it be made for O and I, not for C1. If the motion to go forward is denied, then that is a mute point. I'm looking for a motion at this point.
I want to have another comment real fast, I'm sorry. I completely agree with you. I think C1 is too much. It has too many conditional uses that I think would be, you know, not prudent of us to do, especially given the citizens of, of our town, especially the farers who live across the street. So with that said, I do agree with, with what you're saying to move to O and I. And now that I know that this lot underneath is owned, presently is owned as C2, and knowing that the lots north of those are owned by the Farr family, which are, you know, one of Tyrone's longest residents here. And I know that they care much, that much about the town, that they would not change that zoning in the future. It makes me feel good knowing that that commercial creep would not go any further than this property. So that's what I wanted to say.
Does that mean you're going to make a motion or?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to, to approve the zoning change only if it goes forward as O and I from what is presently zoned at, which is R12.
We have.
Just to be clear, your, your motion is to recommend approval of the rezoning from, to, to O and I, is that correct?
Yes, just like that.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second O and I, however.
Have a motion, a second, now open to discussion.
Just one question, as far as the, I'm still hung up on the traffic. We're talking about future. This came, if it comes to us as a. Then we have a traffic study. Is that how it basically will fall into place?
Yes, you can, i- if a, if a site plan comes before you and it doesn't have a traffic study, you can, you can deny that site plan and say, we need a traffic study and you need it to come back before you. They can bring it right back. And I, I'm sure at hearing this discussion, if a site plan comes forward, it'll probably come with some traffic numbers.
Or if it come.
We don't need to specify that it's contingent upon a site plan.
I don't believe so.
That's going to be a requirement.
Yes, that, that will be a requirement because there will be some site modifications needed to.
Cause I want that.
Make it a different use. And if that were to happen and it were to come forward and, and this traffic study were done and we don't like the traffic study results. You could request an amended site plan that shows a lower traffic impact or traffic impact that shows something that's acceptable. Okay, any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second. Call for vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, update of the final edit of the town's 2022 comprehensive plan. Just, this is really just a notification. Our final public hearing before it goes to DCA is going to be on May 5th to council. We have a draft version of this, of the comprehensive plan that'll be available shortly. I'll present it to both you and council for review, any edits. This is, this is an update to the cop plan, so it's not a total rewrite. There are some expansive portions that we've put in there regarding cart path planning and downtown redevelopment because of the LCI and things like that. So just to be on the lookout for that, I'll, I'll gather your comments. It'll be a short comment gathering period, probably only about a week before it goes to council for approval to DCA. Once DCA, the Department of Community appears, approves that, it'll come back to council and in, you know, just an open meeting, it's not necessarily a public hearing, they'll, they'll adopt the new comprehensive plan. Thank you. Staff comments? None at this time. Mission comments?
Yeah, one comment, Tyrone is the third safest city in Georgia. And I would just want to go on record saying, way to go law enforcement.
Yes, yeah.
You know, that's pretty cool.
I mean, not throwing any shade or anything, we're, we're safer, have a higher safety ranking than some of our neighbors.
Even Peachtree City.
Who number one and number two are that we can chase and.
Number one is John's Creek, I believe. Number two, I forgot.
Those are our goals to reach and, and, and beat.
Right.
Okay. All right, any other commission comments?
Um, I did want to say one thing. I know that there was a couple of comments made about R12 and people building a 1200 square foot house, that's a minimum. So you can build a large house there, it's just our minimum, so.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd like to know how we can make a motion to lower this. So I can actually see Philip.
I just need a taller chair.
Well, that may be, that may solve it too.
Just get him a high chair.
I need just, I need a Yellow Pages or something.
I just need a, like an Ebenezer Scrooge, like accounting scripter's table where I'm up high.
There you go, y'all, that'll work.
I'm happy that he falls back, you know.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Good to have you back, Philip.
But I'm also happy that Catherine is still taking notes because less typos.
I didn't find any this time.
There's only one motion left, y'all. Can I get a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.